Okay. Go ahead and get started. Work sessions are an opportunity for board members to discuss issues informally with staff invited guests. The Board encourages members of the public to attend work sessions and listen to the discussion, but there is generally no opportunity for public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the Board are welcome to do so during the Board's regularly scheduled meetings. First item is to discuss the formal agenda. We've all had an opportunity to review the agenda. Any questions, comments? Okay. We'll conclude our discussion and move on to the first item. That's the ARPA Funding Concept Plan Update on page three. And I'll turn it over to our County Manager, Don Boone.
Good evening, Jerk Riddler, members of the Board. Just wanted to bring the ARPA Concept Funding Plan back to your Board. As you will recall, this is money that came out of COVID funding from the federal government. The County received about $7.8 million, and it can be used for a number of different types of expenditures, which included impacts related to COVID. And that can be generally economic impacts. It can be public health impacts, infrastructure impacts. And then, as we've gone on, it's become even broader in some of the defined uses. All the uses that the County has identified are consistent with the ARPA legislation. And what I thought I would do is just to walk through these one section at a time, kind of remind the Board what we set aside the money for and a little bit about where we are, and then answer any questions. And then we do have a number of additional requests for ARPA funding that I'll talk about at the very end. And we have more additional requests than we have resources, so isn't that a common ailment? So, let's get started at the top and just go by. Feel free to ask questions as we go. The first item was a set aside for economic development. And what we have done is we've identified that really for the SBDC funding. This is funding that the Board approved last year. Kevin Leahy from Cedar came in and part of COVID was, obviously, small businesses were very stressed. And SBDC took a very visible role in supporting businesses through the pandemic and now continuing to support them as they exit the pandemic. And so, the Board had agreed to really fund $120,000 in the out years for the SBDC. We did spend $40,000 for the Eco Northwest Study on the transient lodging tax. And then there was a small amount, $2,500, that went into the fermentation study that was done as part of a partnership with a number of other contributors. So, that's the economic development efforts. At this point, for '23, '24, and for '24, '25, we assume $120,000 to the SBDC program. The second item was childcare. And we do have a total of $500,000 that's been set aside as part of the plan. $200,000 has been expended for the first year of the Childcare Task Force work. And we have $150,000 set aside for '23, '24, and '24, '25 for that total of $500,000. And that will just go to the continued work of the Task Force and of the Community College. The next one is the Navigation Center. And I'm going to let Monica, we're going to tag team on some of these. I'll let Monica take some of the more health and human service-based ones.
So, in fiscal year '21, '22, we did $70,000 initially, and that's specific to navigation services. And so, for example, Helping Hands provides navigation services, and so does Lifeboat Services. And so, we have allocated, we have not allocated any in this current fiscal year because we've been trying to figure out what some of the programs have going on because there's been a lot of different things developing. And so, at this point in time, we have $50,000 allocated or dedicated for this, but we haven't distributed any of the funds. And so, looking out into fiscal year '23, '24, and '24, '25, we're also going with that $50,000. In regards to Emergency Shelter Support System, same sort of thing. We allocated last year, and that was for Helping Hands, Astoria Warming Center, and the Harbor. And then this year, we have not allocated anything because of Project Turnkey and because of the Warming Center. So, still trying to figure out some of that, but we have put down for this fiscal year as well as the next two, $300,000 there. Other nonprofit support, that was distributed to Clatso Community Action for a number of things that they were working on. We have $22,000, $23,000, $100,000 dedicated but not yet distributed. And then in the future years, we have $50,000 set out there as well. And I apologize, I do need to correct. In the current fiscal year, '22, '23, we did allocate $50,000 of that other nonprofit support for the homeless liaison. That is something the last couple of years that's been budgeted in the general fund, but we have used ARPA monies this year to kind of help offset the general fund costs. And then, in the mental health crisis response, that is specific to CBH. And so, this current year, we have provided them with those funds. They've added additional mobile crisis response clinicians to help with that. And in '23, '24, we're also allocating $160,000. And then '24, '25, it goes back down to $80,000. The enhanced mental health services in the jail, in this current year, the sheriff, in talking with him, has had a difficult time trying to find clinicians to be able to provide this. And getting things up and running was something he was waiting for the new jail to happen. So, we reduced that amount in this current year to $25,000, and that has been transferred to them. And then in the next two years, we're looking at $88,800 to provide that additional support. And then, I'm going to turn this back over to Don to talk about the housing.
So, on the housing side, one of the contemplations that we had was to invest in NOHA staff as a means for the County to benefit from a reinforced staffing level with our local housing authority. And so, we did enter into an agreement with NOHA. The first year's payment has been made, and as a result, they have hired a deputy director, property manager. And so, this plan would continue those investments over the next two fiscal years. I think the biggest point there is just the stronger NOHA is, the better the County is in meeting the countywide housing needs. And so, I think that is important as we move forward. The other is that we set aside $350,000 for pre-development grants, for new developments. We haven't spent any of this money yet, but there are some potential requests for this money that will be coming. And so, we know that that money will be spent. And as there's more affordable housing projects, the need for pre-development money will continually grow. The pre-development money just is what gets a project off the ground to see if it's even feasible prior to actually securing long-term financing. So, is there any questions about that portion? So far to date, we have spent about $1 million in that subset area. And we anticipate spending all of that money because, as we know, one of the unknowns and uncertainties still is Project Turnkey. We're still working through the operating side. We are asking the legislature to help us with those ongoing operating tasks. And certainly, both CCA and the Harbor will be bringing their own resources too, but it's uncertain what that's going to mean long-term.
Not so much of a question. Just looking at the numbers and everything. I know firsthand what the childcare initiatives have brought to the community or what these dollars have actually turned into out into the community. And I'm looking at the numbers for, you know, CBH and so on and so forth. And I'd just be interested to know what the direct impact or the direct result would be of those dollars. Was it increased capacity? Was it increased services? What it directly correlated to? And it's not a conversation for today so much as that when we come back, it would be nice to... I know our childcare, Mr. Gaffney came and did a presentation. We are all aware of what that funding resulted in. I'd just be curious to see, and I understand what SBDC's funding resulted in, just because of my involvement there. But I don't have quite a grasp of how the funding resulted with CBH. Or, and you just informed us of the NOHA capacity increase and the person hired. So, I guess I just would like to see the bigger picture. It doesn't have to be in a presentation so much as maybe just material, the direct results. Because my curiosity is, when this funding dries up, what's going to happen to all of these people hired? Where is the additional funding going to come from? How are these entities going to support the increase in the capacity that has been developed? Does that make sense?
Yes. And what I would say is, those are conversations that we've had with these agencies too. In some regards, we were trying to move the ball on a community need, knowing that we would hope that there would be additional legislative priority, which there is a lot of conversation about legislative funding for both housing, obviously, homelessness, and on the behavioral health side. So, I think that we're all hoping that those investments are actually made. But yes, we can provide some additional information. On the CBH side, just as a little overview, that was to actually put clinicians in the vehicle so that they could respond if there was a mental health issue to help law enforcement. And so, but we can certainly do that. I think we plan to do a more robust presentation, but with our staffing challenges right now, we're unable to do that. But we will certainly follow up with that.
I was just going to say, and I appreciate our staffing capacity right now ourselves. And I just, it's not a critique so much as I really am curious how this is going to play out in 2025, '26.
And I can just say that it was an additional two clinicians to kind of go along with the Kahoots model. And so, that's where they are looking at, because that is something that legislation is pushing, that additional funding support there.
Awesome. Thank you.
I just want to dovetail. This is flowing nicely. Placing, right? So, when we look at our strategic plan, there are certain things that are visible, whether it's ours or, for example, the port. With the port, it's easy to see, look, there's grumbling infrastructure. Pieces of things are falling off into the river. So, that's visible. It's material. What I see in these data are, oh, we've had missing infrastructure. We've had missing services, and we're not the only ones. But as you're good to point out to me, County Manager, we're doing a pretty good job as a Board and as a County to look at what was missing, what had been missing, and to spend money strategically for impact now that will carry on later. I mean, we've talked about how do we do economic development? How do we deal with climate change? Those are the big issues that I see that will impact the ongoing results of these investments. And so, in my mind, Commissioner Banks is asking to have us fold into strategic planning, our hopes for how these investments will dovetail. And again, that is understood. But maybe we can at least talk about it so we can contemplate it and communicate it to the community so that people understand, oh, we're trying to deal with a big picture with all of the systems and how they interact. We've made these particular investments. We see they're going forward. The sale of the North Coast Business Park, I mean, all of the other economic development things that we're doing, that's part of it. The other part is the political aspect. Because everybody here pays taxes. And it goes out, what money comes back? So, the work that we've been doing with PacWest, the work that you've been so supportive of to go through AOC, watching how we can get access to the state and federal monies, those earmark, they call them congressionally-directed spending, and what is it on the House side? It was anyhow, we are getting more fluent in the conversation about bringing resources back into Clatso County because we don't have enough money right now to do all these things. How do we get the staff so we can ask for the money, then use the money, then grow the tax base so that we can go forward and address everything that's in this? Is that what you're doing?
Yes, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Commissioner Toyoka?
Just on the housing, you know, items, you know, in the capacity and into the Housing Development Funding Forum last week. You know, we're looking at different projects and they're evaluating. And you look at some of the private enterprise projects and, you know, value there. But the, you know, the one area of concern I have is a lot of the supportive housing projects, you know, relying upon ARPA funding, relying upon different funding sources to initiate and, you know, initial support for those projects. Down the road, where does that funding? We're relying upon all these different things, you know, and we're growing. Where does the funding come from? Without committing more taxes, without, you know, committing more of a greater burden. And I think that's what we have to look at too, is what burden? How many projects do we support to look at the future burden? I would, there's more of the private enterprise, more of that, you know, off the county's books, off the taxpayers, by the same services, yet not making a burden to the taxpayer. Commissioner, let us comment something.
Well, I think we're doing a lot of work in the legislature on that behalf. And I think that the state has finally come to the table and said, we realize that local governments need help. And a lot of the lobbying that we're doing in the legislature has to do with that. And it's very specific.
There's been a lot of that pointing towards off the books.
Really? You let me know when you see that happen, all right?
We need to.
Oh, really? Well, good. That's... Well, sidestepping that discussion, how about a slide into something else? I, you know, we've been talking about the Coordinated Care Organization. And because that's money that's already in play. So, I keep looking to how do we get impact? And, you know, it's, remember reading the fairy tales when you were little about the hero trying to climb the glass mountain? It's kind of like climbing the glass mountain. But I think if we hold it in our awareness, that, and Mimi Haley has said that she's interested in engaging some conversations with us. Okay, so that's a little opening. How does the Board of the CCO, or how does OHA, or how does the Local Government Advisory Committee at AOC? How do all of these, where are the pressure points? Because Commissioner Toyoka, if we could have private enterprise be able to step up and do it, oh, baby, I would be for that. In the meantime, let's do what we can to get our legitimate share and voice and vote in the distribution of that share as we address these needs.
I agree. You know, we're relying heavily on one source. We need to start moving it off the one plate and off the burden.
Well, good discussion.
Ready for me to move on?
Yep.
And now you're going to talk about another investment that's been requested as part of supporting the city that wants to see development more on the private side. But, so, the next little grouping, it begins with the public health infrastructure. Obviously, one of the priorities of the COVID money was to help us reinforce the capacities and the resources within the Public Health Department. You know, I think, and I do give our Public Health Department, our emergency management folks, all of our staff, the Board, a lot of kudos as for how we got through the pandemic with our partners and our 400-plus volunteers. But the reality was, is that rural counties are not particularly well-positioned to deal with pandemics. And so, we've been investing in that infrastructure, and that's been at the tune of 350, 375 one year, and then 350 in other years for a total of 1.4 million. And again, the plan there is that there is more funding coming from the state and from the federal government for public health. And so, what we hope is that the investments we make will still be paid for by the main contributors of public health, which is really the state. The next one is county facility space planning. We have finished that project, and your Board has seen the strategic facilities plan. And we will be interviewing architects in a week or so to actually start executing that plan. But that was $150,000 that I think was really well-spent. And then, the next is the emergency preparedness resiliency. There's been a few projects that we have been funding out of these resources. One was part of the 911 Consolidated Study that was done, looking at our communications infrastructure. And then, the other is that we are responsible for a communication tower that is the emergency broadcasting. And so, we replace, are replacing the generators for that tower for resiliency purposes. And so, those are some of the projects that were being used for that portion of the resources. Then, to date, we spent, you know, just under $1 million on those projects. And there will be more. There'll be a total of 1.663 spent over the next couple of years. Any questions about those three? No questions about those? Okay.
I guess...
Ms. Webb?
Yeah, I do. Are we going to see some kind of a work plan for after our, I mean, we've seen the facilities recommendations. Are we going to see some kind of a scope of work for what the timing is going to be on this?
Yeah. So, one of the first, yes, Commissioner, thank you. One of the first efforts will be to develop kind of the work plan schedule because there's a lot of staging, and we have to really decide how much and when. And part of that is to figure out how big of an effort is it going to take to kind of remodel the Duane Street Annex to be used for some offices? And of course, there is a realistic approach to that project that we're going to take. And so, yes, we'll be coming back to you, Board, as soon as we can work through that.
Because that is something that I do think we're probably going to get some public comments about. And it'd be really nice to be able to know and be able to tell people. Duane Street Annex is one of the great euphemisms of all time.
We can come up with a better... So, and then I'm going to get into some of the more meaty ones, ones that we haven't had full resolution on with this last group. And the first, at the top of the last group, is the Rural Internet Communications Accessibility and Enhancement Project, which that is really the Jewel Fine Maple LC Internet Project. As you will recall, there was a contract between the Jewel School District and Tillamook. I'm trying to remember what the name of the company is. I don't think it was Tillamook Lightways. It was... Well, so there's the company that the school district contracted with. There was a change in leadership at the school district. And the way that it was originally envisioned is that the school district was going to own the communication towers, and they were going to project manage and be the administrative home for this project. And the County was just one of the funders of it. Due to a leadership change, the school district decided they didn't want to play those roles. The problem has been is there is a contract between the provider and the school district. And so, the County Council, myself, many others, Commissioner Thompson, have been involved in meetings to try to figure out what the next steps are and to try to help them untangle this. But at this point, we still don't have a concrete path forward. And so, so there is 1.2 million plus that we haven't spent. It says that we did spend $525,000. $25,000 of that, I'm trying to figure out. The $25,000 was for a coal pack, did a broadband study. And then, we transferred $500,000 to the school district. They haven't spent that. There's probably, I think they spent around $90,000 if I'm not mistaken. So, there's money there. We just haven't had it transferred back until they can resolve the contractual issues with the provider. So, you know, I'm still hopeful that we can move this project forward. It's just taking a little bit longer than any of us anticipated. So...
I'd love the County Manager and everyone involved in this project because it is, it's a gnarly thing. And I'm absolutely behind you. I'm delighted my colleagues have seemed fit to support this project as well. We continue to keep the faith, and it's not done yet. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So, the next one was a water assessment study over at Clatso Plains. We haven't done it yet, but there was $25,000 that was spent on the AOC waters study. But we do anticipate working towards the Clatso Plains Water Study. We've met with the state, Gail and I, and we're actually going to be requesting some money from the state to also help fund this. But we do have some of the ARPA dollars too, just in case, so we can have a robust project. And really, what the project is, is really understanding what the water situation is over in Clatso Plains so that we can manage anything that we might do now and in the future to protect those water resources. So, the next one is County...
Don, I think, Ms. Webb?
Yeah, I just wondered if we were ever going to see any results or anything from the AOC study?
We can, we can, we can get that to the Board. And so, the next one was countywide septicage. As you know, we have a septicage issue. We've heard from the septicage haulers who are currently transporting the septicage out to Rainier, Longview, and other places. We've had a number of conversations with the cities because obviously, the cities are the only entities that have wastewater treatment facilities. The County does not have a wastewater treatment facility, not in the traditional sense. And so, so we have been talking with one of our cities, and there's a possibility. But there's also been a lot of work on the anaerobic digester, and there's still interest. And I'll let Monica follow me up on this. But there's interest from Camp Rylea and others to still partner on that. So, I think that one way or another, the $425,000 that's been set aside for this project will be spent. But we want to have it spent on the highest and the best use, and one that can really make end roads to this wastewater issue, whether it's coming from businesses or whether it's coming from septicage haulers. So, that's one of the areas that I do, we don't know exactly what it means, but that money will probably likely be used over the next couple of years.
Yeah, I'll just say that we're, like Don mentioned, we're continuing to have conversations because Camp Rylea is really looking at the opportunity to be more self-reliant and more resilient. And so, they want to keep the conversations going. The City of Warrenton recently had a wastewater treatment study done, and they were presented with some different options. And so, we'll be meeting with Camp Rylea and the City of Warrenton in the next couple of weeks to see what collaborative opportunities there might be. of weeks to see what collaborative opportunities there might be there as well.
So, the final one under that category was Westport Sewer, where we are making improvements to the Westport Sewer District, which are very vital for the function of that district. So, and Dean and the public works staff have been doing a, doing a great job helping us get that project done. So, so, right now, if you look at all those categories, we have expended 2.7 million to date. And we do expect to spend the rest, obviously. But, there is a question mark with the rural internet one. There's a little bit of a question mark on the septicage one, because we just are not certain what's going to happen. But, I will go back. When we created this plan, we did so really flexibly, because we started this back in '21, '22, and we didn't know what was going to happen in '22, '23, or '23, '24. So, we've been very flexible on how we've been approaching this. I mean, to your board's credit, because things do, do change. And so, but, there's a little flexibility still here, and we have $220,000 that has not been allocated in the above projects. And some of those projects might come in a little bit under, some might come a little bit over. But, right now, there's 220,000 that hasn't been allocated yet. So, I'm just going to talk real quick about some of the requests that we've received. I, I've mentioned some of these in Friday updates at various times. But, the first request came from the Napa School District. It was to have some help upgrading their water system, and the request was for $420,000. They subsequently made, made requests through their congressionally-directed funding opportunities and other funding opportunities. I don't know what the success of those requests are, but they are pursuing other options for, for that investment. The other is that we've been having conversations with the City of Warrenton. As you know, they have infrastructure needs on the water side particularly, and they have some, some land that is developable over on the Ridge Road area side, that they have water infrastructure deficiencies. And so, they would like to invest in the infrastructure that can really address Fort Stevens, KOA, and the development that is going to be future along Ridge Road. And so, I've had conversations with the city about whether the county would want to invest any of its ARPA dollars into some of that infrastructure. And then, obviously, anybody who develops would benefit from having some of that infrastructure in place. There's still a lot of other infrastructure that any developer is going to be developing, because, I mean, that, there's going to have to be in-ground infrastructure. But, we have talked with the city, and there may be, they're not certain exactly what an ask would be. They're working through it, but at some point, we might hear from the city about that. So, just wanted to let, let you know that. The other is that I shared a proposal about a potential economic development study for the STRs. Part of this money would, you know, could, could come out. If the board decided to pursue that study, the money could come out of the ARPA dollars as part of the economic development piece. And so, I'm just mentioning that as an option. And then, the final one that we, I don't think it's going to be any kind of a big need, but the net pens pier is still a project that the city and the county are closely collaborating on. And we believe that the insurance that the city has on the pier will pay for the majority of the cost, that the city and the county will have the cost share or anything above that. And I think there will be some delta above that. I don't think it'll be huge, but it could be $50,000 or, I'm going to say that. And then, that's a huge asterisk, because there's a lot of things that can happen when you're in the water. But, but, we're trying to replace the net pen pier in really a like-to-like, which means that, that the insurance company will pay more. And so, when I say the insurance company, this is S. Stories Insurance Company. What we've been talking about with the net pen pier is that the county will project manage, because we have more staff capacity than the city has right now. But, the city is going to be heavily involved, because it is their insurance, and they do own a pier. So, 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 that's kind of where we are right now. You know, if the board, you know, there is some flexibility as we understand some of these additional requests more. What I would say, staff will come back to your board, and we're open to any suggestions you have, any direction that you have. But, we'll continually come back, and we'll put some more of the, you know, indicators out there too, as we can, to kind of tell the story a little bit more robustly about how these investments have made a difference. So...
Commissioner Webb, you have anything to say?
Well, I just wanted to put in a little word of encouragement for, around the net pens issue. You know, we have gill nutters there. We have the county's whole fish. You know, we, we put so much staff time into raising up those little puppies. And, and I, I love the fact that we're working with the city to talk about that property, because, because it has a lot of potential. You know, I have a group of people who want to have a dragon boat opportunity someplace, but I think that it might still be an area that, that could be used. So, thank you for doing that. I think, I think that's really a, a great thing for us to do for economic development, and also for, for issues around cooperating with the city, especially since the port is so challenged with, with dealing with our, with our fishing fleet and, and other, and other things.
And I will say, Commissioner, that the city's been great to work with on this project. And, you know, I have to give kudos to our public works staff too, and our fisheries staff, because they have come up with ways for us to still transport the fish from land into the net pens, even though there's no pier. And I think that the gill nutters have been using some of the other piers to actually more their boats. But, it's something that is a priority for us to get going. There's a lot of permitting and a lot of other requirements for in-water construction, and so, but, we are moving it forward. So, it is important. There's a lot of economic resiliency that's out on, in those net pens.
I agree with Commissioner Webb. I think that that is, I'm glad to see that we're partnering with the city, and I know that it is a priority for them and being of our fishermen around here. So, I'm glad that we're working on that. I also think that the City of Warrenton project, I know they have limited resources to try to improve their infrastructure in the city. And that would be a big benefit to bring that water line to Ridge Road. They've been trying to do that via Hammond for many years, and trying to get more...
And, and...
Huge benefit to Fort Stevens, KOA, and any potential Fort Point development that would take place there, and then also two other developments that are along Ridge Road.
Yeah, and I think that, you know, at least from the county manager's seat, I think having some county investment out there makes a lot of sense, because that's where the development's going to happen. And we have to identify what those barriers are, and then, and then be creative on how we address them. And so, having the county, which is not always typical, but having a county through these ARPA dollars help them deal with that infrastructure, will pay huge dividends in freeing up a lot of private development along Ridge Road, which I think will be, you know, a definite contributor to our housing needs. So, so, the city and I are still talking, and as soon as they have numbers and a plan, I'll come back to your board and share those with you. Because the numbers have varied a lot, anywhere from $100,000 up. And so, so, we will work with them and find out what is palatable.
Commissioner Banks?
I just, I lean towards, with the spending, I lean towards economic, well, supporting economic development, but also continuing to hold up operations like what is faced over there with the gill nutters. Much as I would like this funding to go to Napa School District, I am well aware that they are seeking congressional dollars for it. And if in the future, additional funding from this scenario that we have in front of us today loosens up or opens up, I would like to, to consider the school districts and at least assisting them with their water concerns, because they don't have an adequate emergency water source there. And frankly, I don't have an adequate emergency water source at my house. So, it, it would be beneficial for us to lend support to them, but I feel like in our current economic forecast, it would only behoove us to be supportive of, of future economic development, but also of our current needs with those pens and support the City of Astoria, Warrenton.
Commissioner Banks? Commissioner Thompson?
This, this is so helpful. You know, we've got all of these jurisdictions that are having concerns about funding and how to get it, and what does it go for. Commissioner Toyok is our, our delegate to the housing iteration of the county work group. But, maybe there's, you know, how much can we do? But, as we contemplate what needs to be done, if we look at all of the electeds considering the larger infrastructure issues and the relationships with each other, so that we have coordinated asks for the congressionally-directed fun, spending, the state funds and all of that, if we can get more unified, get to have a more coherent system. And now, if we're going to have dragon boats, do we have a collective county board of commissioners' dragon boat that we're going to be on?
Absolutely. Absolutely. I've got one in my garage right now.
Sign me up.
Big garage you have.
I don't have a garage.
Oh. Commissioner Thompson?
And, you know, the, the reason it's easier to rally behind these type of initiatives and projects is that it's not just an immediate benefit. There is a long-term benefit for the entire community, and it helps that community because these are projects that are easy to get behind, because it has such a, allows them to become self, or boost in this. It's really easy to get behind that.
But, there's no doubt that if Warrenton can solve some of that infrastructure issue, that it will, it will contribute greatly to freeing up some of the barriers that are currently existing, because infrastructure is what's slowing things down.
Yeah, true, and all the things.
Yeah.
Commissioner Thompson?
And buildable land. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, so, I want to talk about this economic study, because in my mind, it's always good to have good data. And I'm, what I'm looking for is down the road, we've got, we've got a bunch of challenges to our current economic development. We have a habitat conservation plan. We have a referendum about short-term rentals. What I'm looking for, and we have a housing crisis and a homeless crisis. I mean, heck, we've got a whole, we have a whole list. What I'm looking for is validated data by a professional at what I think is a very reasonable cost, that will save us money in lawsuits down the road. Now, that may be a futile hope, but I have this cheerful idea that if we have validated data, we can look at how to better manage short-term rentals, including the issues of caps, locations, housing affordability, I mean, all of these issues, plus an economist actually in our employ, looking directly at our economy. So, I, I hope that, I hope that that's agreeable to my colleagues.
Well, yeah, I understand. I'm just thinking about the timing with this, because we do have the referendum in two months, going to be deciding this issue. Do we want to do that after we have the vote from the people? Not exactly what...
Well, here's the deal. Yeah, and that's a reasonable question. Pardon me for jumping on you, but, but, I don't think it's going to go away, no matter what happens on the election. Because what I see about land use issues, it's the long-term full employment of lawyers in Oregon. So, what I'm looking at is to have a reasonable database solution that will allow us to negotiate compromises now and going forward, because it's, it's like that we've got an issue coming before us tonight. My hunch is that issue will go to luben, no matter what we decide. I think there are people who are eager to continue litigation, and if we have data that are valid, the need, the need for that, for those data isn't going to go away. I wish it were. If it were, I wouldn't even want to spend it at all. I'd just wait.
Yeah.
But, I want to get ahead of it.
And I don't question the value of having the data. I just question the... Commissioner Banks, and then Commissioner Toyok. Commissioner Banks?
I feel like the referendum slid our entire short-term rental conversation sideways. We were in a really good pattern of public engagement. We were in the middle of conversations regarding caps. We were in the middle of a lot of work. I know our staff was in the middle of a lot of work. And that referendum just kind of full-stopped all that work, and it full-stopped our conversations. Because really, having a conversation about short-term rentals now is out of our hands at this point, until May or until after the resolution in May. And I'm not against your thought process of wanting data to support the conversation either direction. It's just, I'm, I'm agreeing with our chair a little bit in the timing, because I don't want to give money out when we're waiting for a vote in May. And it wouldn't behoove us, no matter what sort of information that we receive. I mean, I, I understand the lawsuits are going to be coming at us from both directions. That's not something that I doubt whatsoever. It's just, I don't think that having data is going to change the fact that we're going to get sued. I, 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 I don't think, no matter what that data says, I don't think it's going to change the fact that we're going to get sued by both sides. I mean, that's just sad on the fact of us, because it's the county taxpayers' dollars that are going to be going down the drain because of it. But, not something that is within our control at this point. It's, and I don't, I don't think spending money on more data is going to help us at this point.
I have more of a question for county council than anything. Here's, here's the bus, I'm rolling it your way. No, with, you know, the referendum on the ballot, from all of the correspondence and things we did, it seems like either way it goes, it'll be litigation from one side, or it's going to be contested. How does that affect AOC? If it is litigated further, does things still just, or how does that, litigation hits? It will, either way, you know, you think, based on the...
Thank you, Commissioner. I agree with you. I think the indication is it will be litigated further after the first decision. Both sides have kind of indicated that, you know, it's important, ruling for them, so they would pursue it as far as they could. Far as the status, you know, the ordinance is kind of on hold until the referendum. We don't know what the court's going to say. But, I do want to point out, this is a referendum just based on that ordinance, and the board could still make other decisions. You can make a new ordinance, you could go a different direction. So, I don't think the county would necessarily be, you know, tied down, waiting for the litigation on a strictly legal sense. Politically, you know, it puts you guys in a pretty tough position. But legally, you know, we could still move forward other ways.
Makes sense.
Exactly. We could pass another ordinance that could go, you know...
And it could start the process all over again.
Caught in a loop forever, and then the people of the county are caught in a loop. County manager respond?
Yeah, I was checking whether there was a board. I just was going to kind of reiterate what county council just said, is that certainly with the referendum, that your board would still have policy discretion afterwards, but it will take time for us to tee up that staff and board discussion and get, get direction about what that might look like. But, I think litigation is going to be part of the STR continuum going forward. And, you know, it's, it's not unlike a lot of public policy issues, that there's not agreement on, and the law is not as established as it is in some other areas. And so, you know, I think that what's in front of the judges here... And so, you know, I think that what's in front of the judges here is going to be a precedent for what may happen in other counties. So there's some questions that are being asked that are going to be precedent. So I think a lot of it's up in the air, but I think, you know, there is going to eventually be legally, and how that occurs is through the courts, so.
County manager. Commissioner Thompson? You looked like you wanted to say something.
You know what? Thank you. So I'm the kind of person that if I know there's going to be a need to make another decision, because after the election, we're going to have to make another decision. What do we do, if anything? Do we just sit and wait, or do we do something? I, it's going to take time to do this study. It won't be ready probably before the election, that's not likely, but I'd rather get us beginning to have the logical, reasonable, data-validated, policy development that could happen if we had the data. Because I'm the, I'm the one with the mom that says sooner be done, sooner done, because I would like to have a community solution that we could agree on, that the majority of folks could agree on, and that would pass muster at Luba and DLCD and the courts and everywhere. Well, that's what I'd like. I don't know if I can get there. I think we are more likely to get there if we have valid data. And I like doing something proactively for what, again, I think is a reasonable cost. And here's the deal, when our staff came to us with information about CAPS, there wasn't, there wasn't a relevant study. The study we had said this is a survey of Airbnb asking city managers and city planners about their experience. Do not apply this to a county. It said it right in the study. Okay, good. So there really isn't anything. So maybe we could get on the map in a good way and set precedent in a good way for a thoughtful public policy process. I'd just like to get us on that, on that dragon boat. Thank you.
No, and I appreciate your passion and your interest in that. It's my preference to wait. And I don't know whether that's the commissioner. Commissioner Webb?
Yeah, I, as a former land use planning consultant who has worked with Johnson, actually in the past, I was rather astounded at the way this was facilitated. I think it's rather extraordinary for a county commissioner to ask for a proposal from one specific entity. And I think that when we, first of all, I think this is inappropriate use of ARPA funds. I don't think there's anything in the ARPA regulations using funds for this kind of an action. And I think the process was maybe a little bit uncomfortable. I mean, don't we usually go out for bids and make announcements and things like that? We have a process. Johnson, of course, did our county white helping, although those many years ago. And there were a couple of us in this room who weren't all that thrilled, actually, the way that that came down. So I guess this is a very hurried action that I think that is, we need to take a much more measured approach to any kind of contracts like this.
Okay, Commissioner Thompson, we've just got a few minutes.
Quick, like a bunny. So valid concerns all. I asked Ariane Colombo to make a recommendation, and that was the recommendation. So I just brought it forward because I wanted to get us moving. If we want to, we as a board want to have a different process, I'm okay with that. What I want us to do, if we want to have a whole bidding process and go through, I don't, I was looking to make it easy for staff to say yes and the board to say yes or no, and get us something that we could use. If we would rather do something more extensive, that's more labor-intensive for a staff that's already operating over capacity, and I don't know how we move forward with that additional burden on our staff, I would like us to have validated data. I think it's, I think it's a prerequisite for sound public policy. I don't know when or how, but by golly, I want us to move forward. So whatever is our collective pleasure in moving forward that also fits staff capacity, I trust the county manager's judgment about, does it work for ARPA? So I would question that assumption, that it does not. But please, could we get some data that relate to Clatso County so that we can have a hope of negotiating with reasonable people toward solving this issue? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Thompson?
Well, I'm, in fact, my chair, members of the board, what, if your board would be interested, I think what staff can do is we could take a look at the scope of work, get a little work group together with Gail, county council, and others, and just review that and review where we are with the information that we have and what information the board's going to need moving forward. To Commissioner Thompson's point, to kind of set the stage for what conversations may be forthcoming. But if we can take a look at that, and then we'll come back to your board with a recommendation about what that might look like and timing-wise. And we haven't done that yet. So we can do that if that is agreeable to the board as a path forward, so.
That's good. Yeah, thank you, county manager. Let's take three minutes. Beck Hocke is on.
Chair Quila. Hi, I'm Amy D.
Okay.
Sorry, I was...
Oh, no worries. Get started here as soon as everybody gets back from their day. All right. We have to call this regular session to order. All rise for the pledge allegiance. And again, the board of commissioners, as the governing body of Clatso County, all county service districts for which this body so acts, and then the Clatso County Local Contract Review Board is now meeting in regular session. Teresa, can we have the roll call?
Chair Quila?
Here.
Vice Chair Banks?
Here.
Commissioner Toyoka?
Here.
Commissioner Webb?
Here.
Commissioner Thompson?
I'm here.
And we had an opportunity to review the agenda during our work session. Do we have any questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the amended agenda.
Second. Move and second to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor, signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. First item is a proclamation, Child Abuse Prevention Month, and Nakashima, Nika, I'm sorry. Nikeshla? Nikasha?
Nikisha.
Nikisha Wombe. Executive Director of Clatso Casa Program. Sorry about that, I butchered that.
Good evening, Chair Quila and commissioners. For the record, my name is Patty Jo Angelini, and I'm a public affairs officer for Clatso County. And Nakisha Wombe, the executive director of Clatso Casa, was unexpectedly called away. So I will be introducing the 2023 April Child Abuse Prevention Month proclamation for So spring is a time of new beginnings. It is also the time to renew our commitment to the protection of children in our community. Since 1983, a presidential proclamation has designated April as National Child Abuse Prevention Month. Observing Child Abuse Prevention Month allows us to raise awareness of the severity of this issue and to arm citizens with the tools to help prevent child abuse from happening. Awareness of a problem creates intentional change. Hundreds of children in Clatso County are exposed to violence, drug abuse, emotional abuse, physical abuse, sexual abuse, and neglect. Chances are, all of us know at least one child who has been a victim of child abuse and neglect. Imagine a four-year-old whose parent abuses drugs and has left them alone repeatedly. They have no food or heat in the home, they are alone and afraid. This child becomes everyone's responsibility. Child abuse is everyone's problem. It is important for each of us to know the children in our communities. When we do, that means there's a safe place for children to find the grown-up support they need. If you suspect that a child is being abused or neglected, report it. Reporting suspected abuse creates awareness that a problem may exist. As lay citizens, it is not our role to determine whether abuse has occurred. We leave that to the professionals who are trained to assess whether the concern rises to the level of abuse. However, we have a responsibility to the children in our community to make the professionals aware of any potential concerns. Get involved with, advocate for, and support community programs that support children. Every child deserves a life free of abuse and neglect. Every child deserves a safe, permanent home. Now more than ever, we need to, as a community, renew our commitment to protect our children.
Thank you very much, Patty Jo. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve resolution and order proclaiming April 2023 as Child Abuse Prevention Month, and authorize the chair to read and then sign the proclamation.
I second that motion. Moved and seconded to approve the resolution and order proclaiming April 2023 as Child Abuse Prevention Month, and authorize the chair to read then sign the proclamation. All those in favor, signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. In the matter of proclaiming the period from April 1st, 2023 through April 30th, 2023, to be Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas child abuse and neglect are serious problems affecting every segment of our community, and finding solutions requires input and action from everyone. And whereas every child is precious and deserves to grow up in a healthy, safe, nurturing environment, free from the dangers and harmful effects of child abuse and neglect. And whereas our children are the most valuable resources and will shape the future of Clatso County, Oregon. And whereas child abuse can have long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects that have lasting consequences for victims of abuse. And whereas child abuse prevention succeeds through partnerships among parents, child welfare agencies, mental and physical health care providers, schools, law enforcement agencies, faith-based organizations, businesses, and community members by fostering loving, supportive, and violence-free homes. And whereas we acknowledge that we must work together as a community to increase awareness about child abuse and contribute to promote the social and emotional well-being of children and families in a safe, stable, and nurturing environment. And whereas prevention remains the best defense for our children and families. Now therefore, be it hereby resolved that the Clatso County Board of Commissioners that hereby proclaim April 2023 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Clatso County, and calls upon all community members and local agencies to increase their engagement and efforts to effectively prevent, recognize, and respond to child abuse, dated this 22nd day of March, 2023. Thank you very much, Patty Jo. Next is the proclamation proclaiming, or Problem Gambling Awareness Month proclamation. And our presenter is Emily Riley. A promotion specialist, welcome Emily.
Good evening. Thank you, Chair Quila and commissioners. I'd like to speak to you about problem gambling. Problem gambling is a public health concern potentially impacting more than 264,000 Oregonians of all ages and backgrounds in all communities. It has significant personal, social, and financial repercussions for individuals and their families. Clatso County residents, along with their families, are able to successfully seek treatment through local and state resources. Through awareness campaigns, targeted prevention programs, and treatment services, the negative effects of gambling are significantly reduced. In Oregon, approximately 9.3% of all youth across grade level who completed a survey in 2022, the Oregon Student Health Survey, 9.3% endorsed having gambled over the past 30 days. And in Clatso County, that number was 10.4% of all youth across all grade levels. Also in Oregon, sixth and eighth graders who reported gambling in the past 30 days were more than two times more likely to have attempted suicide at least once compared to those who do not gamble. This is not only across all grade levels, but across all ages, that problem gambling is associated with mental health, despair, and suicidal ideation and attempts. So I want to express how important it is that problem gambling awareness also increases our suicide prevention.
Thank you very much, Emily. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the resolution and order proclaiming the month of March to be Problem Gambling Awareness Month, and authorize the chair to read and then sign the proclamation.
Second to motion.
Moved and seconded to approve the resolution and order proclaiming April
to be Problem Gambling Awareness Month and authorize the chair to read and then sign the proclamation.
Second the motion.
Moved and seconded to approve the resolution and order proclaiming April 2023 as Child Abuse Prevention Month and authorize the chair to read and then sign the proclamation. All those in favor, signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. In the matter of proclaiming March 2023 to be Problem Gaming Awareness Month. Whereas, problem gaming is a public health concern impacting Oregonians of all ages and backgrounds in all communities. And whereas, gambling impacts are recognized at the individual, family, and friends, community, and society levels. Gambling problems drive up healthcare costs and contribute to societal problems such as homelessness, bankruptcy, loss of productivity in the workforce, and crime. And whereas, Oregon and Clatso County are dedicated to reducing the negative effects of gambling for all members of the community through balanced policies and effective problem gambling services system providing targeted prevention, education, and awareness programs and treatment and recovery support services. And whereas, thousands of Oregonians have successfully sought treatment, are in recovery, along with their families and concerned others, and have benefited from the expertise of professionals in behavioral health treatment field who are dedicated to helping people recover from gambling problems. Now therefore, be it hereby resolved that the Clatso County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim March 2023 as Problem Gambling Awareness Month in Clatso County and invites all community members to join in the observance by raising awareness of the impacts of problem gambling. Dated this 22nd day of March, 2023, Clatso County Board of Commissioners. Thank you very much, Emily. Next item is business from the public. This is an opportunity for anyone to give a two-minute presentation about any item on the agenda or any topic of county concern that is not on the agenda. Work of the board, are there any members of the public signed up to speak remotely?
No, there are not.
Okay. Next, we'll turn to anybody that signed up in person. And I know that Rick Bowers, I've got your card here, and you've signed up to speak. Please wait until you're going to give your name and address for the record. You'll have two minutes to speak. Thanks, Rick.
Rick Bowers, 357 Commercial Street. Spent the last four or five years reading consulting reports, academic studies, and books related to homelessness. Wanted to share a few things I've learned about rents and homelessness. The chart in the center of the handout that you've got shows median rent in each state and their corresponding rate of homelessness. As you can see, states with higher rents tend to have higher rates of homelessness. Clatso County's rate of homelessness is seven or eight inches above the top of the page. The Econo-Northwest Report discussing the chart says, "High rents are to blame for the severity of the state's homelessness crisis." Economists John Quigley and Stephen Raphael were among the first to demonstrate that housing affordability, rather than personal circumstance, is the key to predicting the relative severity of homelessness across the United States. They estimated that a 10% increase in rent leads to a 13.6% increase in the rate of homelessness. Consistent with Quigley and Raphael's findings, our analysis indicates that median rents across the U.S. explains 43% of the variance in rates of homelessness. Elsewhere, this same report says, "Over the 2010 to 16 time period, Oregon created only 63 new housing units for every 100 households that formed during that time period." From what I can tell, we're not doing any better in subsequent years. Two economists writing in economic policy review say, "If policy advocates are interested in reducing housing costs, they would do well to start with zoning reform." The handout has other related quotations from other sources that I don't have time to share.
Yeah, thank you very much, Rick. I know this is a passion of yours, and thank you for providing this information. Teresa, do we have anybody else excited?
No, we did not.
Okay. We'll go ahead and close the business from the public at this time and move on to the consent calendar. We've all had an opportunity to review the consent calendar. Any questions or comments on the consent calendar? Do we have a motion?
One question.
Yeah. Commissioner Toyoka.
The year is, uh, City of Gearhart presented the Augmented Law Conference. All right, put you on the spot, Sheriff. Thought we were already thin, so.
All right, I'm ready now. So the question was, how does that affect response for the rest of the rural areas of the county? The good news is, uh, the City of Gearhart doesn't have an overwhelming number of calls for service. And we're only down one position right now that we're looking to fill. And so we're actually in a pretty good spot right now. I do believe this is a great opportunity to support the City of Gearhart. You know, they're part of the community, and they're one officer who has not had a real day off in a very long time. So I think this, uh, I'm really honored that the City of Gearhart looked at us. Blames about the work that our deputy sheriffs do on a daily basis and our reputation. I think this is, uh, this is act of goodwill for a short period of time while they find a new chief of police and an officer.
So is Gearhart, are you, uh, just in the wish?
No, I think we're going to be okay. We've looked at their call volumes and what we're doing. I think that we'll be able to, you know, provide, it'll be county-level service. We're not going to be in Gearhart all the time. We'll respond to them just like the citizens that we serve in the unincorporated areas of the county. But our response time is, you know, averages less than 20 minutes for regular kind of, you know, calls, not the priority calls. And frankly, that will be better than having to call out their one poor officer on his day off or just after he's completed a 10 or 12-hour shift and then having to come from home and.
Yeah. It really is a testament to the trust that they have in the Clatso County Sheriff's Office. And certainly, we appreciate your willingness to want to help out the City of Gearhart. Very testament to mutual aid, yeah. Yeah, Commissioner Webb?
And thank you too, Sheriff, for the way you presented the whole, giving us numbers and hourly rate, et cetera. It was, I thought, was very thorough and very convincing.
Well, thank you.
And congratulations for the community confidence in you.
Commissioner Thompson?
Well, and now that you're here, I'm really looking forward to having you come back and giving all of us an update on the state of public safety in Clatso County. And I understand that's in the works. I think that'll be very good for us to have a real on-the-ground sense all over the county. I'd like to hear also what the fire departments are dealing with because I've got great concern about first responders all over the county. So please come back soon.
Good.
Yeah, thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Anybody else we want to bring up?
Protective of our sheriff's department.
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second. Moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor, signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. We'll start with Commissioner Reports, and we'll start with Commissioner Thompson.
Well, thank you, sir. I think the reason I'm so cheerful tonight is that the Department of Land Conservation and Development had three workshops on sea level increase and coastal erosion. One in Seaside, Commissioner Webb came down for that. Another one in Arch Cape at Fire Hall, and a third one in Cannon Beach. It was a wonderful example of thoughtful, proactive outreach by DLCD. Hope they do more of that. A problem that every workshop body announced was south of Seaside where the flooding has begun to recur over the highway. Right before I came here tonight, I went to the ODOT Open House, and Bill Jablonsky and Ken Schonkweiler, our beloved ODOT folks, are asking for, um, on their draft STIP, are looking for 250 or 300,000 to do a study, U.S. 101 Circle Creek Seaside Flood Mitigation. So they're ahead of the game, looking to do that. I brought for our Public Affairs Specialist, because I know she loves this stuff, a copy of the STIP. And there's a website. They're having another ODOT Open House in Tillamook tomorrow night. If you don't want to drive down to Tillamook, you can go online. And I trust our Public Affairs Empress? Well, I don't know, I think you should have a promotion. We'll put this out. This is the community's engagement. David Reed was there looking at, because if our highway system doesn't work, nothing else works. I mean, we can say that about a lot of things. But the flooding that is now recurring south of Seaside and the impact of sea level rise. So we've got another item on the agenda tonight about beachfront housing. And I, of course, am thinking, I just went to three workshops on rising sea level and coastal erosion. But the law hasn't caught up with the geologic reality. And so to whatever extent we can go forward, Lisa Phillips said, "Well, Commissioner Thompson, how would you go forward?" Planning Chair Chris Farrar was at the table with me, and we said, "Well, wouldn't it be swell if we had a joint work session with our planning commission to talk about issues like this?" Chris's brilliant suggestion was, "And let's look at the public infrastructure first to see what we can do there so that we're modeling the appropriate behavior for neighbors," which I think is just an excellent idea. So that's my happy good news. I'll tell you, I keep working at AOC. I'm working wherever possible to develop those positive relationships so that people, I want to say, know us and love us and care about us all over the state. So I think that's happening. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Banks?
March has been eventful, but uneventful, which has kind of been nice. Budget season is gearing up, as we all know, so working through that with Northwest Seating and Disability Services. There is no meeting on the agenda for CFPLC for a short bit. Getting ready, Fair Board's getting ready for an amazing fair. And so I'm just excited for their starting work sessions. So they are mimicking our productivity, I would say, in their own board. And that's exciting to see. I really have enjoyed conversations with our new Fairgrounds Manager. He seems to be acclimating well. It's a bit of a difference in working for the City of Warrenton. Now he's working for the county, but also then for the Fair Board themselves. So that's a bit of a change, but he seems to be doing well. Overall, things are uneventful. I will have to say, I was kind of excited to have legislation passed for pumping our own gas. And I have to say, being a rural person for the majority of my life, that that is very exciting. And I never understood, when I first moved here to Oregon, why we couldn't. It never made any sense, but, and I get it, taxes and all the fun things, but it's kind of, it's kind of nice. Now I don't have to wait for a portal to come out in the, you know, chilly early morning to pump my gas in Napa. I can jump out and do it myself.
Thanks, Commissioner Banks. Commissioner Webb?
Yeah, I too have attended two of the meetings for the Sea Level Rise LCDC program. And I have spoken with the county commissioner about the fact that I wish that this, excuse me, with the county manager. I'm sorry, Mr. Boone. Please forgive me for that. I wouldn't wish that on anybody. I would, I think that the work that DLCD is doing is really, really notable. They have maps that are absolutely astounding. And I would love to be able to involve more members of our county staff and the cities in this work that's going on. I have been terribly saddened at the lack of public response to the two meetings I went to. I don't think they did a good job of getting people out at all. They obviously didn't have our PIO working on attendance. But we, it's a wonderful project that's going on. And I think, I also would like us to talk to Justin Gibbs about it because I think it's a wonderful launching pad for a county-wide public information and training for our citizens about what to do both in these, you know, subduction zone catastrophes that are likely to happen at any minute, but also in the longer-term issues that we're going to be facing on our landscape. I think that our chair is going to have a heart attack when he looks at the pink areas that are almost, I mean, actually, it's amazing to me, almost your whole district is going to be subject to high water. And it's a marvelous presentation that I really would love to see many, many more people be exposed to. We still have one more tomorrow night. It's going to be in Brown's Need, which also is going to be, of course, a hugely impacted area. I was kind of sad that they didn't have one actually in Astoria. The map isn't too grim for Astoria, but it's everybody's interest. You know, I mean, I think it's something that concerns all citizens. And I think after recently, I think I reported on the Pat Corcoran presentation on tsunamis, that we, I think we need a more of a comprehensive approach for hazardous readiness in our county. And it's, there certainly are no geographic or political boundaries for any of that preparation. So I've spoken with the county manager, and I hope that maybe we can get some rolling for those issues. Otherwise, I spent way too much of the weekend reading the preparation for tonight's meeting and flogging through the Arch Cape speech. When I was head of a county planning department myself, I used to say to any of my staff who brought me an action that I always said, "Did you get your boots dirty?" Because if you haven't been on site, don't come to me with any kind of a report. But so today, I got my boots, or a couple of days ago, I got my boots really, really dirty. So, and I just want to congratulate the staff for this report because it's really pretty. I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Webb. Commissioner Toyoka?
Good evening, everyone. So I'll keep it quick, just wanted to let everybody remind everyone the Cedar Awards are coming up on April 6th. Other than it's a really nice event, it's really well-produced and done. Great example of hard work, perseverance, and dedication. Read you some of the scenarios of the businesses that are receiving awards. Totally entrepreneurship, just work and dedication are alive. Wonderful way just to spotlight some of our community members and see what they're doing. The other thing is, the NICO veterans, another meeting. And a lot of, the one I wanted to highlight is veterans. Try to referate throughout, you know, for all, to all veterans. A lot of it is, you know, like, the old days when I came home, it was, you know, just rub dirt in it and get back to the work. You know, there was no, World War II, World War II. Grandfather came home and they called him a pedophile or shell shop. And we have PTSD, you know, and there's a mid-range of folks that, you know, we can't, like, didn't have anything for it. In the Corps of Engineers, the job. There was no transitional day. So the NICO veterans program where they're having other veterans, you can know what you've been through, that, so what people, you can have a relational base. Or to talk, you know, more comforting to talk to somebody who's actually in your boots than it is to have someone go, "Well, I can empathize." They're getting that relational standpoint. Program. Thompson, County Manager, you know what I'm talking about. Sometimes you know as a Marine, you just, you know, you've been places, done things that normal humans don't do. And I know it's a few things. I just have that network available. As I learn more and as I get more, we don't have a Veteran's Services Officer for now. As I learn more, I'll pass it on to the staff and see how we can get plugged into this network.
Yeah, thank you. Great program. Thank you, Mr. Toyoka. County Manager?
Jake Rabelton at the Board. Just to piggyback off of Commissioner Toyoka, staff will be reaching out to help coordinate any buddy that would like to attend the Cedar Awards event. And so there is a registration process, so we will reach out. And if your Board would like us to then coordinate that. The other is, I will say, Commissioner Toyoka just mentioned Veteran's Service Officer. We just hired a Veteran's Service Officer, meaning CCA did. And so they're on staff and processing applications. And so, so we are moving forward again. So, and that's all I have. Jake Rose.
Very much, County Manager. We'll move on to the business agenda this evening. First item is appeal of hearings officer decision. AJGORELLC variance on page thirty-seven. Ian Sisson, our senior planner, is here.
Thank you, Chair Queela and Commissioners. I'm Ian Sisson, Senior Planner with the Community Development Department. Have a short presentation for you, just to introduce the application and the appeal process. And the, the action I'm requesting from you tonight is to issue an order stating the scope of review for this appeal. So you can see, go back here, you can see a photo of the subject property here. There's an existing house that was built in nineteen thirty. And the applicant, property owner, wishes to tear this house down and build a new home that is built to withstand the flood and geologic hazards that are present on the property. You can also see in this photo that there is a six-foot wide public beach access, which was a big part of the reason the applicant was seeking this variance. So the address is on Carnahan Road, and the, the zone designation is Arch Cape Rural Community Residential. Again, it's in the flood hazard and geologic hazards overlays. The lot width is substandard for the ACRCR zone, which has a sixty-foot minimum lot size for new parcels. Carnahan Road, most of the oceanfront parcels, you may have seen in the staff report, I did some analysis, and the average was around fifty feet wide. So, so the average is substandard as well, but this, this particular parcel is more substandard than most of the others on the street. And our code allows for a reduced side yard setback down to ti- down to five feet for substandard sized lots that were legally created prior to our zoning regulations. However, the lot size of this parcel is greater than the maximum. And so even though it's substandard in width, it didn't qualify for the reduced setback. So the ten-foot setback applied, and the applicant requested a variance to, to one of the side yard setbacks. And there's a diagram here, prepared by the applicant, showing the area of the variance request. And again, that six-foot public pathway on that side of the property. So the existing dwelling is just shy of seventeen hundred square feet, has four bedrooms, it's about twenty feet tall with two stories. The proposed dwelling would be on a single story. The, the first floor would be elevated above the base flood elevation, which is required because of the flood hazards there. And would be roughly the same size, slightly larger, same number of bedrooms, and again, designed specifically to withstand those hazards that are present. And again, because of the proposed building width here, the applicant was requesting a six-foot variance for the ten-foot side yard setback, for a four-foot setback to the north property line. There again is a site photo. And so variance applications are processed under a type-two procedure, which requires a hearing with a, a public hearing with a hearings officer. That hearing was held on November twenty-second of last year. And during the hearing, the staff report recommended approval based on the facts that were presented and the applicable criteria. Following the hearing, the record was reopened at the request of the applicant to respond to some of the public testimony that the applicant did not have a chance to respond to during the hearing. So during the extended record period, opponents of the variance submitted building plans, schematic design for a three-bedroom home that was narrower, narrow enough to meet the ten-foot side yard setback on both sides. And they argued that the applicant therefore would be able to make a reasonable use of the property without a variance. Hearings officer issued his decision on February ninth of this year and denied the variance request. Essentially, the, the main reason for the denial was that the hearings officer found that the applicant did not meet their burden in justifying that the requested variance was the minimum adjustment necessary to have reasonable use of the land. And so the conclusion was that the variance could not be approved. And on February twentieth, the applicant submitted a notice of appeal, which included the basis for the appeal, which is Exhibit F in your packet. The applicant's main arguments were that the variance was the minimum necessary for the reasonable use of the land, and they went on to expand, they expanded on, on why they believe that, that the variance is necessary in order for the applicant to use the property as was intended by the zoning ordinance. That the hearings officer's decision did not appropriately address the findings in the staff report. And they also called out a, a procedural error in an attempt that they had made to issue some final legal arguments after the hearing had already concluded, which the hearings officer rejected. And that was why the hearing ended up being reopened, rather than just having the applicant be able to submit a final argument without opponent's ability to respond. It was a little bit unique as far as procedures that I've seen before. And so the applicant had raised an issue with, with that particular item. So again, our code requires that we, before you really do anything with this appeal, decide how you're going to process it. So the first option would be to deny review, which is essentially adopting the hearings officer's decision as your own. And second option would be to review on the existing records, so not taking any new evidence into consideration, just reviewing what's already in the record. Or three, to limit the review to any issues you determine are necessary to properly resolve the matter. And in that case, you could take new evidence and testimony on those limited set of issues. Or you could have a de novo hearing, as if the hearings officer, November twenty-second hearing, had never happened. And if you, if your Board were to decide to hear the appeal, then we would schedule that for a later date, based on the deadline we have to issue a final decision. I think we would be shooting for your second meeting. And any appeal of your decision would go before the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ian. Do we have any questions? Four choices in front of us. How we want to proceed. Sounds like it was a very unique situation where the record was reopened just for the applicant to provide testimony that they allowed for the opponent to provide as well.
So the applicant read, there is a statute, which I cannot recall off the top of my head, but there is a, there is a provision in the Oregon Revised Statutes for the applicant to submit a final written argument after the hearing has concluded.
Right.
And basically, that would kind of allow them to bolster their arguments that were presented during the hearing, not necessarily to introduce new evidence. I don't think new evidence would be admitted, but they can kind of reassert points that were already made. And so the hearings officer read the statute differently and said, you know, you only have that option in the context of a hearing that has been continued. And he said, you know, at the conclusion of this hearing, I clearly closed the hearing and closed the record to any party, to, so all parties. And so therefore, he rejected the applicant's final legal argument. But he said, I would entertain a request to reopen the record and do an extended record period where there was a seven-day period for, which ended up being a fourteen-day period, for any party to submit anything they wanted. A second seven-day period for any party to rebut any information that was presented during the first period. And then a final period for the applicant to provide final legal arguments. That was the procedure that was carried out, and it, it did take a while because we had to issue a notice. So the app, I presented that option to the applicant. They decided to pursue it. And because they did decide to pursue it, we had to give all parties the opportunity to say whether they believed the record should be reopened or not. And the, the parties agreed that it could be. And so the hearings officer decided to, to grant the request and reopen the record and, and to that open record period. So it was, it was kind of like a follow-up mini-hearing, but it was all in writing.
Did it twice, yeah. Commissioner Thompson?
Love my neighborhood. I mean, it's a lot of really smart people who want to think about things and have different, sometimes contradictory opinions about
If you could mute yourself, please, if you're joining us virtually.
About what is the right thing to do. There's clearly a conflict here. When, when I was looking, Ian, could you, could you put it back on the map so that we can see the, the plots? There, so, so colleagues, there are, there's a beachfront row of houses, and then there's a second row of houses behind it, and then ODOT right away, and then the highway. So, so it's jammed in. It's jammed in. And that walkway. All right. So I don't know if this is the right place or the right question. But, but when I'm looking at this decision, he says, the hearings officer, if there, if there are reasonable uses of the land that do not require a variance, or that require a smaller variance, the requested variance is not warranted, no matter how reasonable the resulting development may be. My jaw's open. Is that, is that the standard we've always applied? And I just wasn't quite tuned into that?
This is actually the first variance that I've personally worked on. I would have to defer to probably Julia or Gail to tell you what the, they had been. But they, you know, they both reviewed the staff report that I prepared and the findings that I prepared, and were kind of on the same page about how we were interpreting the variance criteria. You know, obviously, the hearings officer came to a different conclusion and was looking a little bit more strictly at, you know, what is reasonable use of the land.
Well, okay, so I sat on the planning commission for almost five years. And we heard variances. We did, as planning commissioners, hear variances. I don't think I have ever, and maybe it's just because I've been here for eight years and my mind has adjusted to this different reality. But I don't think I've ever heard that. And remember, I just came from three, count them, three workshops on rising sea level, which you can see is right out the front door, and beachfront erosion. And, and third thing, the house is built in nineteen thirty. Well, if you're, if we are in a harsh maritime environment, right on the ocean with the saltwater and the wind, I, I'm thinking to myself, you know, that's a ninety-three-year-old house. And yet, okay, so that's on one side. On the other side, I'm thinking, I always want to do the legally proper thing. And we're going to end up at Luba anyway. So, so what, what's the cheapest, most efficient way? Because time is money. To continue this conflict is to only exacerbate it. And so what I'm looking for from staff is, what's the quickest way to get this resolved?
Well, so you have, again, four options. Three of those options would involve this coming back, this item coming back to you in some form of a hearing, whether that's on the record, limited set of issues, or de novo. The other option is to deny review, and you could do that tonight. And so I guess that would be the shortest.
Deny, so denying review in spite of my saying, scratching my head going, wow, that sure isn't the decision I would have made as a planning commissioner. The shortest, cheapest way to resolution would seem to be to say, let it stand, and then somebody else will take it to Luba. And then legally qualified people can make this decision, and we don't have to put our egos, we don't have to insert our egos into this situation about what we think is the right thing to do and second guess the hearings officer.
I don't know. It's a tough one, because I don't necessarily agree with the hearings officer. I think the staff made the right, right decision in this regard. Well, Commissioner Banks?
Because there is no other reason given for denial of variance. There's no waterway being impacted. There's no, there's no environmental potential impact that I can see in regards to what would have caused the denial of the variance other than just to deny it. Which, everything in my, inside myself, I, I, I'm like, I am all for property rights. You own this property, you should be allowed to build upon the property in the manner of which you can build within the, within the space allotted. And I understand variance is for the purpose of use, but it seems like a very logical request, especially in consideration to the beachfront property and to, of, like, we built on the footprint of our home because it was a nineteen thirties home, and the bathroom was built on the porch. So I would like to be able to honor these property owners with something much more safe. So is there any other reasons for that denial, other than just?
Well, again, the, the reason for denial, the, really, the primary reason for denial was that the hearings officer found the applicant didn't meet their burden. So that they would, that, that the variance that was requested was the minimum necessary to have a reasonable use of the land. In other words, they could build a smaller house on that property and meet all the setbacks, because they, their proposal meets the front yard setback, it meets, meets the south side yard setback, it meets the oceanfront setback. The only setback that they're proposing vary from is to the north property line. And so, and, and again, the opponent, in this extended record period, demonstrated that, you know, at least in their estimation, with their, the tools that they had, that they could, that a, that a house could be designed to fit on that property, meeting all of the setbacks. And, you know, it would be smaller than what the applicant was proposing by about three hundred square feet, and it would have one less, one fewer bedroom. It would have three bedrooms, I think, is what they showed. But what the applicant was proposing was, you know, essentially to replace the, the square footage and the number of bedrooms that exist in the existing home. and the number of bedrooms that exist in the existing home. Um, and the applicants, or, or sorry, the opponents during the hearing raised the issue also that the bedrooms that are in the existing home may not, and I, I can't say for sure, but may not meet current codes for the size of, height of ceilings and things like that. Um, so, you know, in their minds, it would be, uh, unreasonable to expect that you can get the same number of bedrooms today, uh, within a small footprint. So, um, so again, the, the variance criteria are very clear that, um, the, the conditions on the property must be so unique and unusual and apply only to that property such that, uh, without a variance or through the strict application of the code, um, the applicant would be deprived of reasonable use of the property. And so that, there is just a, you know, in the staff report, there was an attempt that was made to define what is a reasonable use based on the existing development in the neighborhood. Um, the hearings officer didn't take so much of that into account, but came to the conclusion that, uh, the applicant didn't meet their burden to say there was no reasonable use of property, of the property without the variance or that it was the minimum necessary to have reasonable use.
Yeah, Commissioner Webb?
Yeah, I was, uh, I actually watched the recording of the public hearing uh, and read all of the neighboring comments. And I was really astounded by the vitriol from the neighbors. Um, and then when I went there, these houses are really already very close together. I mean, it, I could, I stood there for a long time with, and I printed out some of your pictures from there, um, saying to myself, wha- what is the impact of this? And you did a great job, incidentally, on those photographs by, except by actually superimposing a shot of, of the, the new construction. And I was ju, I, it was very clear to me that the neighbors had done a lot of homework. Uh, their comments didn't look to me like Jane and Joe Smith's comments. Um, they, they certainly knew a whole lot about zoning codes and other things. Um, and so, I, it, do you all have any feel for why the neighbors were so opposed to this? It's such a slight variance. And, and I just couldn't, I mean, they were talking as if, I mean, they were talking, of course, about their view corridors, which always makes me crazy in Oregon. But, um, and you all put those in the conditions. You wrote them, you wrote into the conditions that they weren't gonna be able to cheat by putting vegetation too high to, that would restrict the, the view corridors for the people on the east side of the road. So, do you have any feel for what was going on with, with the neighbor? Has, is this an area that has been contentious before about replacing houses? Or, or maybe, maybe I should be asking Commissioner Thompson?
That, that may be true. Um, I think the, the view issue was really the primary concern of the opponents. And so there were, um, at least two property owners on the east side of the street who believed their views would be impacted, um, because of the width of the house and also just the, the shape of the roof. And so that was really the primary reason that they put forward.
And I got a kick out of that because actually the proposed new house is a couple of feet shorter than the existing house was. So, it, and because of the beach access, which is paved there, very impressive, um, gave a wider view corridor than they would've gotten. So, I don't know. I, but, 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 part of my concern is that I think that, I think that some of, I, you know, sitting back and saying, well, this is clearly gonna go to Luba. Um, the, I wonder how vulnerable the, our hearings officer is in terms of process. That is something, because he's our hearings officer, that we, it's, the responsibility is on us. Um, so I wonder about that. Um, this is, this was a pretty, um, I, I, I mean, I've been at this a lot longer than you have, Ian, but, but I shared too that I, I, this process of opening, of not continuing the hearing. Um, that, that's pretty unusual. Because, you know, these things are like a, they're a little bit like a courtroom process. I hope, I hope I'm not being too sidelineded here. But, but, you know, the deal is that, that, that the pro does their presentation, the con does their presentation, and then there are rebuttals. And, and there was not having, leaving the, the, um, the hearing open gave no opportunity for that rebuttal. And that's sort of standard operating procedure for, for these, these, these types of hearings. So I think he's kind of vulnerable.
If I could, I think the hearing was conducted correctly, um, in that, you know, all parties were given the opportunity to present, um, their arguments. And the applicant started, uh, with his presentation and then, um, the hearings officer invited parties in favor, parties who were neutral and parties who were opposed, and then gave the applicant the opportunity to provide a rebuttal at the end of the hearing. Um, what the hearings officer said was, nobody requested a continuance during the hearing. And so at the end of the hearing, the hearings officer closed the hearing and closed the record because no continuance had been requested. In order for the hearing to be continued, um, either the hearings officer or a participant would need to say, to request a continuance.
When there's contentiousness like this from the neighbors, they almost totally leave the hearing open. Uh, just so people can, can have time to research, you know, some of the allegations that have been made. Um, so I don't, you know, I, I hate it when things go to Luba and it's a procedural issue that decides a case. But of course, we're all used to that, it happens all the time. But I just...
Commissioner Thompson, can you once again?
No, in all my accounts, you're, you know, very technically, very smart. So, my main thing is, you know, I heard reasonable use of the land. Yeah, I think, I think the hearings officer didn't try to make it objective. Um, so in the staff report, I definitely tried to make that standard objective by pulling data from the neighborhood and saying, you know, here's the average and the median, lot size and lot widths and dwelling size and things like that. Um, the hearings officer's decision didn't contain that kind of analysis. This, this standard is... Neighbors are doing it this way, so it should be... Very technically perfect.
Neighbors aren't doing it the same way. You know, that's what, that's what struck me, that's what struck me was that it's, it's not as if it's a neighborhood where there is a, and I've seen some of these where, you know, especially in newer developments, where houses are all cookie cutters and everything. It's those things. And, and if somebody wants to vary that, well, that can be, that, that, that can be a little challenging. But in this case, I mean, this neighborhood, drive down Carnahan, these, these houses are real close together, they're quite different, they're, it's just, it's just, to me, there's no sensory issues here. And, and I thought the condition that would, that you always, that you always come forward with for variances, that the staff came up with, well, I think they addressed a lot of those issues.
I agree.
So, um...
Commissioner Banks?
Um, I, just, getting over this, um, I tend to be on the side of, of staff recommendation. Uh, so I guess that my question is, is I, I wish to support, uh, property owner and in their efforts to, to achieve what they wish to achieve with the property they own. And so what is staff's recommendation for us to help assist them to get from point A to point B in the most, in, in the quickest fashion? Um, of these four options that you've provided? Uh, because for me, I instinctually don't want to deny them because I feel like everybody should have their opportunity to express themselves when they request it and to be able to go through the process. So instinctually, I don't want to deny them. Um, but if denying the appeal expedites the process for them to get to the endpoint that they wish to get to, which is to build on the property, I'm, I'm looking for advice from, from you on how do we help this property owner achieve their end goal?
I don't think, I don't know, can you answer that, Ian?
Can you answer that?
I, I was, I, I was just gonna say that, I mean, we had those four choices and certainly one of those was that we could do on the recor, just by the record review, right?
Right.
Probably be the most simple way for us to go forward, right?
Yeah, if you decide to take it up, that would be probably the simplest. Um, I will say, you know, I appreciate the kudos on the, on the staff report. Um, I personally don't have very strong feelings one way or the other. You know, I'm a neutral party here and, and the hearings officer is, is an experienced, very experienced land use attorney and understands the law much deeper than I do. So, um, you know, he issued the decision that he did, I respect that. Um, you know, it can be challenged, obviously, here we are with an appeal uh, and the applicant has an attorney and the opponents also have attorneys. And so, you know, if you were to take this issue up, I think we're really gonna be diving into the technicalities of the criteria and the law and the precedents that are out there. Um, and so that's the kind of hearing, whether it's on the record or, um, de novo or limited issues. I think, you know, that's the level of detail and scrutiny that's gonna be necessary to come to a different conclusion than, than the hearings officer who, who has, you know, an extensive legal background on land use issues. And so, you know, the other option again would be to deny review, uphold the hearings officer's decision. Um, you know, in any, in any case, um, any party has the opportunity to appeal this to Luba. So if you took up the hearing and you held the hearing, um, and say you overturned the hearings officer's decision and you approved the variance, it's possible the opponents could then take it to Luba. Um, or if you hold a hearing and you decide hearings officer was correct and not approve the variance request, it remains denied, then the applicant could also appeal your decision to Luba. So it, it's possible that it could end up there either way. I, I just, I can't predict that.
I don't, for me personally, I don't wanna set a precedent of denying a property owner their basic property rights. Um, and, and if, if us as a county commission set a denial of that, does it further impede, uh, their ability to move forward in Luba? Would that hinge the conversation to Luba's level? And so as a commission, or as just myself, I'm the speaker as individual commissioner here, I just, I don't wanna set a standard of denial of somebody's inherent property rights.
I wanna, I wanna make a...
So Commissioner Thompson and Commissioner Webb? Commissioner Thompson?
So Commissioner Banks, I appreciate that. Um, here's, that's why I started out with this. Cause I've been hearing about my neighbors who don't like development. Well, they like development, fine, when their house was built, but after that, maybe not so mu... Well, it's human nature, right? I love it, I don't want it to change. And if I'm smart and, or rich and I know law or I can hire lawyers, then I have a feeling that I can and should control the change in my neighborhood. So what I heard was, the more complicated it is, the longer it takes, the more money it costs. So for me, um, I don't think that we will taint, um, our, our support of anybody's property rights if we ex, I mean, with friends who make it take longer and cost more money, that's not really an act of friendship, you know what I mean? Or support. But, but it's, it's a shame, it's a shame that it can't be worked out, that neighbors can welcome new neighbors, especially ones who are, who are putting in an energy efficient house that's gonna be better for the environment. They're gonna be putting in a house that's raked so that it will deal with the changing, um, in, in sea level and all of that. It, it's a shame that those changes can't be welcomed and worked with. But, but longer is more expensive. The more legal hours, the more consultant hours are spent, the more expensive it is for everybody.
Community Development Director, Gail Harrison? Gail?
Hi, thank you. Um, I just wanna thank everyone for their discussion and especially Ian for the, uh, great presentation he did today. I just wanna address your concerns, Commissioner Banks. Um, first of all, this is part of the process, the appeal process. So if, if your board were to choose to, um, deny the review, that is not gonna impact Luba's view of it. They're not gonna look at it as damaged goods and saying, if the board of class of county commissioners wouldn't even touch this, it's obviously flawed. So I wouldn't let that, um, influence your view of how you wanna look at your four choices before you, this evening. Um, the other thing is that when we look at development, and you mentioned this earlier, that you support someone's right to develop within their, their parameters that they have in the zoning code. And so in this case, they have, the applicant has asked for something above and beyond what we would normally allow. So we, they are asking something special from us. And so even if you as a board decided not to review the case or as Ian pointed out, if you did the hearings officer review and it goes to Luba and it still could be denied at Luba and it could get appealed to circuit court and it could still be, um, denied there. And it could go all the way to the Supreme Court and still be denied. Regardless of whatever outcome happens, the property owner still has the ability today to come in and build on their property. So no one has said you cannot build, it's just, they may not be able to build their exact dream house that they would like to build. And the variance process, um, is not set up to help people build their dream structure. It's set up to help people who, without any relief from the rules, wouldn't be able to do basically anything with their property. And so that's really the, the, um, whole essence of a variance. So I just wanted to kind of give you some level of confidence that regardless of whatever decision your board decides tonight and how to handle this, that this property owner still has the ability to construct a home on their property right now.
Thank you, Gail. Commissioner Webb, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, I think, um, well, it's just that technically, Luba is not supposed to consider. They are supposed to make their decision on the merits of the case. Uh, and so our opinion really won't have any... On, on Luba's decision. Well, and I should say, it, it won't have any impact if we simply deny review.
Hello, this is, this is Christian, I'm, I'm the attorney for the applicant. I, I don't know if I'm allowed to speak, but I, I do have a comment about the impact on, on review.
No, I'm sorry, you know...
Okay, understood.
All right, Christian, you're, you're not allowed to speak right now, thanks.
Okay, no problem, thank you.
So, can we go back to the four choices?
And just to clarify, denying review would imply that you're affirming the hearings officer's decision, essentially adopting those findings as your own. And so that's what, those findings are what Luba would review if it got to that point. And, you know, they could, if they found that some of those findings were not efficient, they could, uh, remand.
Yep, okay. Commissioner Banks?
So of the four options, which option here, um, doesn't, allows us to review all of the materials, including... the materials, including the material after the reopening of the case?
If you wanted to review everything, it would be, option number two would allow you to review everything that's already in the record without accepting any new evidence. Option number four would be a completely new hearing.
Well, I think under, I mean, we've had this discussion now and talked about the most efficient way to go forward, and I think Commissioner Thompson's first suggestion was probably the right one, which was the denying the review. And I know that we have all have expressed our prejudice with doing that, but probably is the most proven way to go forward.
Can't vote in favor of denying. I just, I did, I can't, but I'm one of four.
So, do you have a motion?
So question though.
Commissioner Toreka?
So, you know, no, it could be taller. It will be more, you know, then. You know, my only hangup, I guess, in this whole thing is, is it subjective?
Well, I think, go ahead, Nick.
If I could just correct one thing, I believe that the proposal would just about meet the maximum height of eighteen feet.
Oh, so there's a few feet.
Yeah, eighteen feet is the max height for a motion for a lot.
And again, I think as Gail and Ian have both mentioned, that they still have the opportunity to build a house, not getting granted the variance, building that house. They're still allowed to build one.
And then you deny, knowing how I was gonna vote. And now I have no idea how to vote. I do have kind of an idea. Idea? And that is that we live option two, which would basically be to rehear the hearing.
Yeah, you'd be reviewing the evidence of the officer.
And so if we did that, and then we could express an opinion, and that would be our way of responding to our constituents, of how we would feel about this. I think we're all pretty sure, however, that at the end of that, this would go into Luba.
Yeah.
So where does it go?
Oh, my, exactly, exactly. Big time money. Well, our constituents, so these are District Five constituents, right? So our, my constituents. So here's the deal, I'll make a motion to deny review, not because I agree with the review, but because I wish to expedite the process. So I move that we deny review.
So it's moved and seconded to determine the board commissioner's scope of review for the appeal to deny the review in the matter of the variance application number twenty-two dash zero 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 three one eight. All those in favor signify with an aye. Aye?
Seven.
Oh, yeah, question. Commissioner Toreka?
I have a question.
Yeah.
So if we voted this, are we setting any? Biggest hangup in being a president for any, for...
This is still a quasi judicial land use issue and those do not set any kind of legal precedent.
Sounds like you were...
County Council on...
You have a point of clarification?
Uh, point of discussion. So my curiosity is, is if we went, are, would Luba take into account for patient or for, after we reviewed the record's decision, would that then enter the Luba process?
Your decision would become part of the record. And so you, you know, you have before you tonight the hearings officer's notice of decision, there would be a similar notice of decision of your board with your findings in this case.
Any other points of discussion? We have a motion on the table here. Do a roll call. Okay. All those in favor signify with an aye. Aye. All those opposed? Yep. Roll call vote.
Check, Sheila?
Aye.
Well, I mean, just to verify everyone.
Oh, were you, did you wanna roll?
I did.
Okay.
I, but I answered, so.
Vice Chair Banks?
Aye.
Commissioner Toreka?
Aye.
Commissioner Banks, I mean Commissioner Webb, excuse me. Nay. Commissioner Thompson?
Aye.
Okay.
And I'm, I'm restricting review to the record made by the hearing.
Okay.
But it's...
Move it seconded, discussion, go ahead.
That it's the entirety of the record, including the reopening and all information.
Right, that's...
I just wanna point a clarification.
Everything from the application to the hearings officer's decision would be part of the record you would review.
Okay, thank you.
Question? Yes. So, let's talk about cost, 'cause this is time and money. How much time will it take? Do you know how many legal hours are usually involved with this kind of thing? I mean, I know, you may not even know that, but here's the deal, I'm gonna vote against this, 'cause I want this to be as brief as it can be. I want it to be as inexpensive as it can be, 'cause it's already cost time, money, and ill will. And I wanna contain that. With respect. Thank you.
My work as staff to prepare the materials for the hearing for you would be pretty minimal because the record's already there. I have all the materials and my work would be pretty simple. So it would kind of depend on the parties involved and what level they wanted to continue to be involved in a review on the record. Again, they wouldn't be able to provide new evidence, but they could still have the opportunity or they would still have the opportunity to testify during that hearing. So they're, you know, those individuals or their representatives would be able to come here and to present to you sort of, you know, restate the arguments that they made without presenting any new evidence.
And when would we be thinking that would be possible?
Probably the second meeting in April, so that we can stay on track with our legal timeline to issue a decision.
Okay. Well, any other comments?
Well, a question. We wouldn't do it during a commission meeting, would we? These things are almost always separate from a regular meeting, I think. So would we have to ship?
So the normal procedure would be for you to rehear on the record during a regular commission meeting. I guess alternatively, you could work with the county manager and your fellow board members to schedule a special meeting to conduct the hearing. But given your meeting load and your work session load and your work schedules and your personal lives, it could be difficult to arrange that and still maintain our legal deadlines that Ian has talked about. So most likely, it would be held at a regular meeting.
Yeah, I mean, that is my concern too. I mean, we're wading into an issue that's already gone to the hearings level, hearings officer level.
Two and a half hours long.
Yeah, and...
The hearing.
Oh, it's, so...
I told you, so what I'm telling you, so...
And we'd be dealing with their wishes, that's for sure. Commissioner Toreka?
For the council, just in terms of the nature of the decision is, you know, is that anything... We're just causing delay and let...
I didn't quite understand the question. You know, I think there's a question on definition made. And if that, anyway, I, you know... No, I don't think so. It isn't a judicial process, and so the decision is your guys' decision, and I think be appealed, but there's no liability, they couldn't sue us for, they could just appeal it to Luba.
Commissioner Banks?
I guess my, um, it's possible we do the record, to our own conclusion, and that can, the hearings officer, that at least goes to Luba. So I guess that's where I'm stuck on, is that at least our voice...
Yeah, Commissioner Thompson?
Didn't we just hear Commissioner Webb say that they don't, sorry, she didn't say it quite like this, they don't care what we say.
Well, they don't...
It's part of the record, it's part of the record, but technically, they have to consider it on the merits of the law, of, they're making the same...
Or our concerns, our...
They'll know, yeah. But then, but then the party pays for the privilege of having our opinions on record. I mean, that's the part, it's no favor to them.
The request, they're fully requesting to a, I feel like they're going in with the cost of the appeal, correct?
That's correct, and we did change that fee so that they only will pay if your board agrees to take up the case.
Okay, so any other comments, questions on this?
So I thought I understood, they only pay if we agree to take up the case, but if we take up the case, they have to pay us.
But they're going in with their eyes.
And they have to pay their lawyer too. And, yeah, they have to pay the lawyer and anybody else. I mean, it just, it gets, it compounds the expense, is my concern.
Move to review, we have had a motion and a second, correct? Yeah, right, determine the board commissioner's scope of review for the appeal at the hearing officer's decision. And we've opted for restricting the review to the record made by the hearing body in the variance application for number twenty-two dash zero 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 three one eight. Okay, all those in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Okay.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Chair Sheila?
Nay.
Vice Chair Banks?
Aye.
Commissioner Toreka?
Aye.
Commissioner Webb?
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson?
Nay.
Okay, the ayes have it, so we will restrict the review to the record made by the hearing body. And thank you so much, Ian and Gail, for your patience and time this evening and your very hard work on this matter.
Thank you.
Ian, you can stay there if you want to, that's fine.
You got another, you got another one coming up.
That's right.
You're much taller in person.
Okay, next is a public hearing, Rural Accessory Dwelling Unit Regulation Amendments All right, and staff report? Yeah, this is the continuation public hearing on ordinance twenty-three dash zero three, and we have the second reading by title only.
Ordinance number twenty-three dash oh three in the matter of, an ordinance adopting amendments to the Clapton County Land and Water Development and Use Code regarding accessory dwelling units.
Thank you. Is there any additional information from staff?
No, Chair Quillen.
Okay. Clerk of the Board, are there any members of the public signed up to speak remotely?
No, there are not.
All right, anyone in, signed up to speak in person?
No, there's not.
Okay. Therefore, we will go ahead and close the public hearing. We have any discussion? Okay. You have a motion?
Move to approve ordinance twenty-three oh three.
Move and seconded to approve ordinance number twenty-three dash zero three, all those in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. And that is that. Thank you so much. Now, if they were only that quick. Next is ordinance twenty-three dash zero four, LawDUC Amendments, Child Care Facilities on page seventy-four. And then again, this is a continuation of public hearing on ordinance twenty-three dash zero four, LawDUC Amendments, Child Care Facilities, and we have the second reading by title only.
Ordinance number twenty-three dash oh four in the matter of, an ordinance adopting amendments to the Clapton County Land and Water Development and Use Code to address family childcare homes and childcare centers.
Thank you, Anthony. Is there any additional information from staff?
No, sir.
Clerk of the Board, are there any members of the public that have signed up to speak?
No, there's not.
Anyone in person?
No, there's not.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Any discussion? Are you ready for a motion?
Move to approve ordinance twenty-three...
Move and seconded to approve ordinance number twenty-three dash zero four, all those in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you, Gail.
Thank you.
We have any other items on the agenda this evening? That is it, wonderful. All right, anything for the good of the order? Go ahead and adjourn, thank you very much, have a great evening.